This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order N-29-20 dated March 17, 2020 regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. The live stream of this meeting may be viewed on Comcast Channel 15 and/or online as noted on the agenda. In accordance with Executive Order N-29-20, the public may only view the meeting on television and/or online and not in the council chambers. The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission of Wednesday, June 10, 2020, is now called to order. We are conducting tonight's meeting in a virtual setting using Zoom. All planning commissioners and staff are participating from remote locations. All voting will be conducted by roll call vote. Mr. Paulson, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair, just let the record reflect that all planning commissioners are present.
Okay, thank you very much. I would ask that everyone stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. As the Planning Commission conducts this meeting this evening on behalf of the Town Council and the residents of Los Gatos, we encourage active participation, which is essential for democracy and critical to the work of this planning commission. That participation can occur through, number one, prior to a meeting, written comments about agenda items submitted to staff are always welcome and helpful. And then during our meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. During the verbal communication period, an individual may speak on any topic not on the agenda. And during the meeting on specific agenda items, any member of the public may speak about that item that is on the agenda. If you wish to address the commission tonight during the verbal communication period or during the consideration of an agenda item, you must join the Zoom webinar via the link and the password provided on page two of the staff report. When I announce the item for which you wish to speak, click the raise hand feature in Zoom. If you're participating by phone only, press nine on your telephone keypad. When called to speak, please state your name and address for the record. And in fairness, who all want to speak at this meeting, it is requested you limit your comments to three minutes. We have now come to the verbal communications portion of the meeting. Members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue not on the agenda of tonight's meeting. Mr. Paulson, do we have any members of the public wishing to speak during verbal communications?
Have you not seen any hands raised? Let me just double check. No hands raised for verbal communications.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. Tonight, we do have two consent items to be acted upon with a single motion. These are all the minutes from our last two meetings on May 13 and May 27, 2020. Any member of the commission or the public may choose to pull an item from the consent calendar for additional discussion later in the meeting. Does any committee member or member of the public wish to pull an item from the consent calendar? I'm not seeing any hands raised from commission. And Mr. Paulson, is any member of the public? It looks like not, he's still on the bit. Alright, so seeing that there's no one that wants to pull the consent items, may I get an emotion for approval of the consent calendar? And we can do this by raising hands. Commissioner Padami?
I move to approve the consent items, number one and number two, consisting of the minutes of May 13, 2020 and the minutes of May 27, 2020.
Thank you. May I get a second? Commissioner Tavanna?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments or changes that any commissioner would like to make to the minutes? Alright, seeing none, I will call the question and I will, we will again do roll call vote. And I will work in that order that we normally sit in if we were in present. Commissioner Padami?
Yes.
Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes.
Commissioner Birch?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Genoff?
Yes.
And then I vote yes as well, so it passes unanimously. And the next item on the agenda would normally be public hearings, although we have no public hearings on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Items three and four on the agenda are considered other business. So we will move on to agenda item three. And, and that is to accept the annual review report as required by the condition of approval number 21 of Conditional Use Permit U-19-003 for Mariposa Montessori School on property zone R1- or 1-8, located at 16548 Ferris Avenue, APN 532-07-127. The applicant is Kirsten Dawson from Mariposa Montessori School. The property owner is Faith Loser in Church. And the project planner is Sean Mullin. We are being asked to accept the annual review report submitted by the applicant required by condition 21 of the CUP. And we need to make the findings that there are no significant impact on the environment under CEQA and that the Mariposa Montessori School is in compliance with their CUP. Mr. Mullin, will you be making a staff report tonight?
Yes, thank you, and I can be brief. In May of 2019, the planning commission approved the modification to an existing CUP to increase enrollment at the school. The approval included a condition that a one-time review be considered by the planning commission one year following the approval. The staff report includes documentation summarizing the actions taken to comply with the conditions. And based on the information in the report and the documentation provided by the applicant, staffs determined that the the Mariposa Montessori School is in compliance with their CUP and recommends that the planning commission accept the report. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mullin. Do any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Mullin, and you could let me know by raising your hand? Okay, it looks like there's no questions from the commissioners. Is the, Mr. Paulson, was the applicant going to speak tonight, or?
Thank you, Chair. The applicant is present, so if the applicant would raise their hand through Zoom app, then they can be recognized.
Okay, we would be happy to hear from the applicant, so all you need to do is raise your hand if you wish to speak.
Ms. Dawson, you should be able to speak at the moment?
Okay, great. Thank you so much to everyone for bringing this back to the forefront, especially so soon after the shelter-in-place restrictions are being somewhat lifted. As Sean stated, we have followed up diligently as requested during the meeting last spring. And I'm so sorry, I should state my name, Kirsten Dawson, and my address is 517 Blossom Hill Road, A4, Los Gatos. In addition to the documentation, we would just like to add that our relationship with the neighbors who also presented their opinion during last spring has been very amicable, if not, you know, in good standing, in great standing. In addition to the documents that we provided where they requested privacy and that was granted last spring, we've gone above and beyond also fixing fences that have been blown down on their property at no cost to them.
Okay, does that conclude the comments that you wanted to make?
Yep, I have nothing else to add other than Sean's report, in addition to Sean's report.
Okay. Would any commissioners like to ask any questions of Ms. Dawson? Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you, and thank you for providing this service to our children. One thing I wanted to follow up on during last year's application, part of the consideration was that there were shortages of opportunities for this type of program because a number of other facilities had closed. Actually, we heard testimony that the situation was quite dire. What has the experience been during the school year prior to the COVID-19 shutdown? And what's the projection for next year?
Thank you for your question. So I will answer the first part, which is in response to the 2019-2020 school year. We were at full capacity, which I believe speaks to your early point about having an excessive need for placement of children within early childhood education within the two to six-year age range. Of course, with the onset of COVID-19, it is a little difficult to predict what the fall will look like. We of course want to stay within compliance with the state guidelines and continue to provide not only the best education but a safe environment for our children. So we are in the process of determining what that will look like. And as you're well aware, that that changes with every other Monday yearly. So we do project having full enrollment. We have a toddler classroom, the two primary classrooms and the pre-primary classroom, and that would still be the plan for the fall.
Thank you. The community really appreciates what you're doing.
Thank you very much. We're happy to be of service to everyone.
Do any other commissioners have any questions for Ms. Dawson? Okay, if not, then we would move on to see if there are any members of the public that would like to comment on this item. Mr. Paulson, are any members of the public wishing to make any comments?
I am not seeing a hand raised. There is one other attendee in gallery which is identified as Heather. I'm not sure if she's part of the applicant's team. Heather, if you wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and I now see a hand raised, so we will allow her to talk.
Hi, everyone. Excuse me, this is Heather Gibson, and I did want to reiterate Kirsten's thanks for being present, especially during this time and conducting the meeting virtually. I wanted to add that, oh, Heather Gibson, my address is 14850 Los Flores Lane, Los Gatos. And I currently serve as the role of treasurer on the Board of Directors for Mariposa. I wanted to add that in addition to meeting the requirements of the conditional use permit, I also spoke with three of our neighbors, two immediate neighbors while we were rebuilding the fence. They both expressed their happiness with how things were progressing. If I asked them whether they had any additional things that they wanted to discuss with us, and they said no, that the they were comfortable with how everything was going. So I also spoke with one other neighbor on Potter Court, and I would say that all of those discussions were very, very amicable. And there were no action items for us that came out of them. So I feel like our relationship with the neighbors has improved considerably from the somewhat, I don't know if contentious is the word, but everyone was trying to figure out the best ways to coexist with a shared property line last year. And I think everyone has done that in a way that I'm very proud of.
Thank you for your comments. I guess technically that you're making comments on behalf of the applicant, but since we don't have any other comments, would any commissioners like to ask any questions of the speaker? I don't see any hands raised, so thank you for your comments. And Mr. Paulson, there's nobody else that is wishing to make comments, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so then we will, we will move on and, and ask the commissioners, close the public part of this discussion. And then we will ask commissioners if they have any additional questions for staff or any comments that they would like or if they would like to make a motion. And just to remind you, the motion will be to, to determine their compliance with their CUP as well as that there are no impacts with CEQA. So does anyone have any comments? Commissioner Hudes, I saw your handle.
If there's, if there's no other comments from commissioners, I'm happy to make a motion.
I don't have any comments. Does anyone else have comments? Commissioner Barnett does have a comment.
I may be missing something, but I didn't see the condition eight being satisfied the safe driving letter.
Could staff comment on that?
Mr. Mullin, are you available to answer that comment? Unfortunately, my internet froze right as Commissioner Barnett asked the question. If he could repeat it, I'd be happy to see if I can address it.
Maybe I'm missing something, but I didn't see that condition 18 was met, which required a safe driving letter to the parents.
So, thank you, the safe driving letter, the note about safe driving, I believe, was included in a school newsletter. The 2020 school newsletter and perhaps, oh, we've closed the public hearings, so Ms. Dawson may not be able to shed some extra light onto that, but I believe it was included as attachment five in the March 2020 newsletter.
Commissioner Barnett?
I still have the question whether the newsletter was distributed to neighbors as opposed to the parents and families.
The intent, I believe, of the committee team was to send it to the parents of the school, not to the neighbors. The concern arose from the neighbors at the last meeting to request that the school provide a letter to the parents of the school to remind them that it's a residential neighborhood and to make sure to drive safely.
Does that, and just answer your question, Commissioner Barnett?
I guess it's a question of interpretation, so I'll accept Mr. Mullin's comment. I had another question, concern, and that was condition 20. Let's see if I can find my comment here. Oh, on condition 20, I only saw that there were several emails connect. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, on condition 20, I saw that there were several emails sent to certain neighbors named Laura, Bob, and Mary. There's an email that says there was an intent to reach out to their neighbors. I was wondering if that was done.
And that's exhibit seven with the various email threads between the school and Lori, Bob, and Mary. Those were the folks that were most concerned at the last meeting. So staff accepted that as the applicant's efforts to reach out to the neighbors to assuage their concerns.
Any other questions, Commissioner Barnett?
I have no further questions.
Commissioner Hudes?
Thanks, and since there were some questions raised, before I move forward with them, I think actually maybe those questions would have been apropos to the applicants, but we've now closed. So I maybe just wanted to summarize in a question to staff. Have there been any complaints from the neighbors, either to the police department or to code enforcement or to anyone else on town staff about the operation of the school during the last year?
I'm not, staff hasn't received any, and I've not, not heard anything from the code enforcement officer who would have followed up with me. And I'm not aware that the police department has been contacted. So it's, the answer is basically no, we haven't received any complaints at this time.
Okay, thank you. I'm prepared to move forward with a motion, if that's okay, Chair?
Commissioner Padami might have had a question before you make your motion. No, she said no, so go ahead.
So I move to accept the annual review report as required by condition of approval 21 of approved conditional use permit U-19-003 for Mariposa Montessori School on property zoned R18, located at 16548 Ferris Avenue, APN 53207127. And I can make the findings as listed in the staff report.
Okay, is there a second, Commissioner Padami?
Yes, I had my hand up to make the second, but I wanted to hear Commissioner Hudes finish up with his revised motion. I think the school did an excellent job in reaching out to the neighbors. We had a very engaged audience when this came before us initially. And there's nobody here tonight to complain, and we don't have any letters. So I'm going to assume that the outreach was done in a very efficient and a very successful manner. So I'm happy to second the motion.
Would any other commissioners like to make any comments before we take a vote?
I was just gonna comment, like Commissioner Padami, I feel like when we were doing this a year ago, we had a lot of interpretation from the neighbors because they wanted to increase their enrollment. And they're providing a really valuable service, and it doesn't seem like there's been any issues. And it seems like they followed up on everything that we asked them to do, so I'm happy to support the motion. Is there anyone else that wanted to comment before we vote? Okay, seeing none, I will do the roll call vote again and start with Commissioner Padami.
Yes.
Commissioner Tavanna?
Yes.
Commissioner Birch?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Hudes?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnett?
Yes.
Vice Chair Genoff?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well, so it passes unanimously. And Mr. Paulson, are there any appeal rights for this action?
There are not appeal rights to accept this report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so then we will move on to item four, which is we are to receive an update on the Town of Los Gatos vehicle miles travel, otherwise known as BMT, transition for the California Environmental Quality Act or CEQA analysis. There was quite a bit of iteration in the staff report, and I see that Ying Smith is, who is our transportation mobility manager who prepared the staff report is here tonight, so will you be making a presentation?
Yes, yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, good evening, commissioners, happy to be here. So Ying Smith, Transportation and Mobility Manager of the town. So this evening, I will be providing the same presentation to you as that was presented to the Town Council is February 18 meeting. I know it has been a while. The council did make a decision per the staff recommendation. And the council's action was one of the decision points in this transition to the new CEQA transportation analysis. So at the time, staff asked the council to consider and decide on the option to set the threshold, which is the key decision in driving the rest of the decisions in this pretty long process. And the council will be considering other decisions later this year as we move forward in the progress. As the chair mentioned, that the background information is provided in the staff report as well as in the attachments. Most of the technical materials were prepared by Ferenc Piers, which is the transportation engineering consultant that the town hired to help us process. Staff worked with Ferenc Piers in preparing the information as well as in crafting the staff recommendation. Oh, I'm sorry, I should, I need to share that my screen with you. Just, sorry, just please give me a moment. You go. Just want to check to make sure everyone sees the presentation on the screen. Good.
Is there any commissioners that can't see the presentation? I can only see some of it, but it looks like we're fine. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So this is the outline we used, and it's quite a bit of materials. And I want to try to move as quickly as possible and allow time for your questions. First, we want to start with some technical background. The Senate Bill 743 was formed through law in 2013. The legislation intent was to align the state goals with greenhouse gas emission, active transportation, and infill development. What this means is that in the new CEQA guidelines, we'll be moving from evaluating impacts to the drivers to evaluating impacts from driving. It means we're changing the CEQA transportation analysis from using local service to identifying environmental impacts to using vehicle miles travel, or BMT. So there are few changes in other sections of the CEQA guidelines, but the most of the change relate to the transportation impact analysis. However, it doesn't change how a city updates its general plan evaluation as well as the congestion management program, as well as any other entitlement review. It also means cities may continue to maintain its own local transportation policies and continue to use local service in the local transportation impact analysis. So when we look at in the CEQA process, we're not allowed to use local service anymore, we will be using vehicle miles traveled. The CEQA change doesn't affect the process itself in terms of the public process and disclosure as well as how we determine whether the CEQA process, the environmental process is adequate. So we do, our consultant presented this really nice slide. It really says the kind of different levels in the entire process. First level is the legislation. It says the goals and the intent. And it also calls out the State Office of Planning and Research, which is OPR, to update the CEQA guidelines. And so now we get to the middle part, which is the CEQA statute. And then the next level down is the technical advisory, which is a technical book prepared by OPR. And it provides advice rather than a strict standard or mandate. The council has the discretion to set the thresholds and as well as make other decisions. So the Town Council will be facing four major questions, and they will have to make decisions on all four of them. And they are presenting this format. The metric, the methodology, threshold, and mitigation. We are in the process in providing the documentation, which will satisfy the requirement of substantial evidence. There's another terminology you'll be hearing quite a bit, is substantial evidence. These four topics will help the council in the decision-making. It really builds the framework. And the decision the council made back in February was just the first one, which is the threshold. In setting the thresholds, we kept, we put them as maybe four options each city can consider. The first one is just follow the OPR's technical advisory. And in the technical advisory, OPR spells out is 15% of BMT will below the baseline conditions will be considered sufficient. So that's what the OPR says. And many of our neighboring cities are taking this approach, so you will hear about this approach quite a bit. The second one is a variation from the first one. That OPR is a state agency, but there are other state agencies also set their thresholds. For example, the Air Research Board says a threshold at 16% or like close to 17% reduction. The third threshold, the third option is something we're considering, and the council made a decision on that. This is the approach that we set a threshold consistent with the general plan, future year BMT projections. The logic is since we're updating the general plan as we're speaking now, and the general plan determines the land use and transportation network. And from that, the town can produce a BMT projection or an allocation. So we know based on the best two available, what kind of BMT projection we see in 2020, I'm sorry, 2040, in the 2040 horizon. So and the fourth option is also a variation from the third one, which is a look at the VMT performance and to make a determination that we don't want to produce more VMT in the future in terms of per capita. So the reason why I want to share with you the four options is that we want to show that we have considered different approaches to set the threshold. And we narrowed down to two for the council's consideration and recommend one of them in moving forward. And then, so now we want to go into a bit detail about thresholds. We want to highlight a statement from the OPR Technical Advisory. It stays, the OPR recommends that a per capita or per employee VMT that is fifteen percent below that of existing development may be a reasonable threshold. So it's just one sentence, it's a very compact sentence. And there's several decisions. It would break it down. First is the per capita or per employee concept. So we're looking at VMT from the efficiency standpoint. We're not looking at the total. We're looking at per either employee or a worker. What is the VMT value in the future? So that's one piece. And the second piece is when we say fifteen percent below, we compare it to a baseline, which is the existing conditions. In this case, we're using twenty eighteen as the baseline because that's the information we have available. So it's a very complex sentence. And then we want to just explain a bit more what it really includes. And also, the reason why OPR recommends such a threshold, it does ties to the state's climate goals. So it's not a random number. The state have gone through a lot of research and determined at the state level, the fifteen percent is a reasonable threshold. So now going from the state level, want to bring into the Los Gatos context here. Los Gatos, as we all know, is located at the edge of a pretty large urban area. And we do have a more suburban kind of land use context, especially when we compare to some of our neighboring cities. For example, San Jose or downtown San Jose would definitely don't have that kind of land use density or that kind of transmission network to support the transit or some of the bicycle users. So by location, we tend to be quite generate pretty high VMT compared to the county average. So do you want to jump to the next example? So this is the chart that shows us both at the county level VMT as well as some of our neighboring cities. And it's divided by per resident versus per worker. So the per resident numbers are to your left and the per worker numbers are to your right. The red line, it represents that fifteen percent threshold. If we choose what OPR is recommending many cities, that's the fifteen percent below. So you can see, as I mentioned, Los Gatos is a little bit higher than the county average compared in both the residential side as well as the employment side. And for us to say if we want to choose the fifteen percent, it's quite a bit, quite a big number for us to drop down to. And it's not so easy to accomplish. So and not just easy, it's more not as realistic to accomplish that kind of reduction. And so I think if we have questions, I can go into the details. But it's put it straightforward in the city by city kind of comparison, also compared to the Bay Area average as well as the county average. I do want to highlight that VMT is an accessibility metric. So how much a project generates VMT is mostly determined by the land use that surrounding that and use the setting, as well as the transportation network surrounding this particular project. So is those factors determine most of the VMT number. The other factors may change the VMT value by a little bit, but not by much. And then I will, I will actually go into a bit more detail on that, actually in the next slide. So this is like what we call the pyramid. And it really highlights some of those measures or actions that can show that what projects are likely to have lower VMT or projects are likely to have high VMT. So basically with this pyramid, we can actually put them into three broad categories. And we have some explanations in the staff report. So those categories, we show how much they influence the VMT. The category with the highest level of influence on the VMT production, which is shown on the bottom of this experiment. Those measures include regional infrastructure, for example, transit like rail especially and the highway network. And then the regional transportation and land use policies. So that's another level that really have really the big ones that move the VMT needle. The next group is the so-called location efficiencies and as well as the site design. So those are examples of like bicycle and pedestrian network in surrounding this project location. And some of the connections and how well this project site is connected to the facilities. Finally, the last group of measures, which is on top of the pyramid, which actually have the least impact on VMT production, is the transportation demand management or the TDMS. The examples include, for example, onsite bike parking and bike share or transaffair subsidy. So the the impact on VMT is relatively low. So with all that information, those are the considerations staff put in in making our recommendation. And we really want to set the background on that. The considerations we look at, including what we just talked about, effectiveness of the TDMS measures, and they're not super effective. And then also the overall statewide VMT trend. That's worth noting, over the years, as well as protection, actually before COVID-19. The, on average, the state is seeing an increase in VMT per capita. That's not the trend people want to see. Unfortunately, there has been a trend. So that is something that we as Los Gatos, we don't have much control over. This is really a big picture trend that we are all working within. And then the really last thing is we ask ourselves the question, is the fifteen percent reduction achievable and also defensible threshold? So I think defensible is really key word. The state, the CEQA guidelines ask us to really, each city to establish substantial evidence. So if we, if we have a reduction number that is too out of outreach, it becomes less defensible. Just a reminder, the town has the discretion to set its own threshold. The legislation gives us that kind of discretion. And as long as we support or provide substantial evidence, and then we also do our analysis, make sure it's adequate and complete. So in the staff report, as well as in the, in the my presentation, we narrowed down to two options for the council to consider. The first one is rely on the OPR Technical Advisor, which is the fifteen percent reduction. And the second option is to set the threshold that's in the general plan. In this case, based on our general plan update that we're working on. And actually, my CDD topic that we're on with you. And I want to, this is the same table as you see in the staff report, just this one and the next slide. And we did a side by side comparison of the two options. We want to summarize the different considerations and the benefits. One thing we really want to point out is there's actually no right or wrong answer. We just, staff believes option two is more appropriate. It doesn't mean the option one is the wrong answer. So I just want to really highlight that one. And to, I think the most important thing for our consideration is the town, we have the very mature land use and we don't anticipate any major transit investments in the near term. And also the general plan doesn't anticipate big developments that are changing the land use mix or really change the location. We call those kind of game changer type of developments. And we don't anticipate those in the general plan. So those are really important things, the local contacts we want to take into consideration in making this recommendation. Another thing we want to highlight is when choosing option two, it allows us to have the benefit of using the CEQA streamlining provision. So when the council sets a threshold based on the general plan projections, future projects, as long as they're consistent with the general plan, they don't, they will be considered having less than significant transportation impact, CEQA impacts. So that is another benefit we have in choosing option two. I think that is pretty much can sum up the reasoning behind the staff recommendation of option two. And I can just jump to the next steps. We are still working through the process. And after the council make that decision, it really helped us focus on our energy to produce a substantial evidence. Eventually, we'll produce, like later this year, we'll produce the new Transportation Analysis Guidelines. And the process will tie with the general plan update and tie with the CEQA analysis. We will also update the local Transportation Analysis Guidelines and we tie these two documents into one. So those are the next steps. And we will come back to you and provide updates. That concludes my presentation and I'm happy to hear your questions.
Thank you very much. That was a very nice detailed presentation. Do any commissioners have any questions for Ms. Smith? I can't see everybody. Commissioner Hudes? Go ahead, Commissioner Hudes.
Yeah, thank you. I have a few questions, but maybe I'll start with the one regarding option two. So first of all, with regard to option two, I assume that the VMT that's allowed is going to be linked to the amount of residences and the housing numbers that are projected in the general plan. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So if, for example, we set the housing in the general plan to the minimum required by the state rather than an increased number, then our maximum VMT would be lower in that case. Is that correct?
Yes, you're correct on the total VMT. Here, however, however, we're looking at the so-called efficiency measure. So it's the per capita VMT concept. So I understand that we're looking at roughly two thousand units. If we change it, say two thousand to fifteen hundred, your per capita VMT will stay about the same. If we cut the number by half, that we may see, we have to run the numbers, so it may go one direction or the other. So it's the concept of total VMT versus per capita VMT.
Okay, and I have a second question related to that, if I may. If the, so if this increase in housing occurs over, let's say, twenty years, culminating, you know, in that number being reached in twenty forty, does, but the, but the general plan doesn't say that explicitly. It just says that we're going to increase, you know, by this amount over the twenty years. Does, is the allowable VMT increased in year one of the twenty year timeframe?
Your total VMT will increase as those projects come online. Your per capita VMT, we actually predict that will be pretty stable. Given the current land use and transportation policies will be pretty stable. So it doesn't make a big difference in Los Gatos, whether the, say, the two thousand units will occur over the next twenty years or versus they all occur in the first ten. Again, I'm assuming the current transportation and land use policies.
Okay, thank you. I have other questions, but I don't want to dominate this.
Do other commissioners have questions for Ms. Smith? See if I can see everybody. I'm not seeing anyone else that has questions. Before I let Commissioner Hudes continue, I did want to ask a question of Ms. Smith. We're receiving this report from you. There's a recommendation for going with option two. What are you looking for from the commission other than comments?
I think at this point, that's we're really welcome your comments and that really help advise us in the next steps. Since the council has made a decision already. And I think your comments, especially the ones that we really help us shape the next step, will be really helpful.
Okay, so we're not going to be voting on anything. We're just going to make comments on what we think about where things stand right now or where, what direction they make go. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So then I will turn it back to Commissioner Hudes. I might have some additional questions.
Thank you. My question is more for my understanding of how we're going to look, use this in the future as an opportunity to learn something about this. So my question is, if a proposed development is, you know, clearly going to cause a major traffic jam, what recourse does the town have now under the existing regulations? And what will it have under the change to VMT? Is CEQA off the table? Or are there other measures that the town can take?
That's a really, actually really good question, good example to help us think through the CEQA process versus the local process. Before SB 743, most cities, including Los Gatos, would do transportation analysis, both due to the local policies as well as CEQA threshold together as one document. So we, even though in some cases you can split the hair, but it really is one CEQA document. So that would be if a project in creates a major traffic jam, there's a local service impact. So that it will be considered significant CEQA impact. In the VMT world, which we're in already, if that project, your example, doesn't cause a VMT impact, there will be no, in the CEQA world, it would be considered less than significant impact. However, it may still in conflict with our local transportation policy. For example, the council can continue to use local service D in its own local policy. So it will be what, how we build in, like, well, so if a project triggers the local impact, what we're going to do with it. As long as those, what we're going to do with it, it's not going to in conflict with the CEQA process. In that case, that you're, in your example, will be really how we as a town consider what the following steps are, what the so-called the consequence will be. And what we want to ask this project to either change the project or provide mitigation measures. However, we, if we as the applicant change the project to the, to the nature that it will have a VMT impact, we actually have a little bit of a problem. So we really have to think through that when we are updating, creating the new CEQA Transportation Guidelines, as well as updating the local guideline. We want to think through those two metrics and how they can come together and not be in conflict.
So I have a follow-up maybe for the town attorney on this. So let's just take this example of a project or proposed development that is going to cause a major traffic jam. Just, we know that from, you know, everything that's been done. But it doesn't cause an issue with VMT and CEQA. So in that So in that case, how um a- and you know, the the developer, the applicant says, well, it's it's in compliance with sequel. You can't deny the application. Really, for the town attorney, what recourse do we have? And if, for instance, the developer were looking for an exception or a variance, could the project be denied if it's going to cause a major traffic jam?
Sequo has never been used to deny a project. That's not what sequel is about. Sequel is about informing the public and informing you what the environmental constraints are, environmental issues are for that specific project and how to mitigate those specific impacts. So it's not, sequel's never been used. In this case, we're going to have to use V M T for the sequel analysis. But I think what uh was being said was is that we will have or could have town policies above and beyond sequel that would be used to mitigate a project if that's possible. But assuming a project uh meets sequel, meets that part of the environmental review under state law, but that does not mean the town, if it can make the correct findings, can make the correct objective standards, could do that above and beyond sequel if it needs to do that. Um and so I don't know if that answers your question, but from a sequel standpoint, sequel isn't used to deny projects. It's used to inform the public and to uh implement mitigation factors. Uh whether that be intersection improvements, whether that be, and that's where the baseline has to be used for those projects as opposed to just what the project is going to implement.
No, I understand that interaction with Sequo. And yet, if a project, you know, does not mitigate, uh then then there's uh, you know, there there's evidence for um environmental impact and 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 reason to deny a project. So the question is, is town code uh at this point being uh sufficient to deal with this change in Sequo? Um or are there, is town code just fine to deal with it as it is? Or are changes necessary in in order to prevent a project that will clearly cause a large traffic jam, for instance?
If if you need to go beyond what the new V M T and sequel is, changes would have to be made to our code or a general plan.
Is it, does it make sense to do that?
That's a policy issue, not a legal issue.
Okay.
Do you have other questions, Commissioner Hetus?
The other question I have is um about, you know, are we, where are we in all of this? I understand we looked at some uh local communities with regard to some numbers, but in terms of the responses from other communities, uh are what what are the extremes? Uh are some places taking a strong position on this? And are we in the middle or are we an outlier? Um and are some municipalities fighting this?
I I would like to ask for a clarification. Uh what you say fighting this, do you mind explaining what you mean by fighting this?
Well, the way that uh numbers are being set, uh the way thresholds are being set are are some, where where are we relative to other communities in in setting these thresholds? That would some way impact the, you know, development and traffic in in our town. Where do we stand?
Okay, um I I think the best way to explain this, we uh since we're choosing our own threshold based on the general plan sequel analysis, we want to see what the number show us first rather than artificially draw a number. Um granted, the O P R recommends fifteen percent. That's based on a statewide number. Uh we feel like our community is very different. So that's what we are. The council did give a direction. The the council expressed a desire to really have bigger reduction, like closer to the fifteen percent or even lower. So the higher the the percentage is, that means your V M T impact will be lower, fewer cars driving less. Uh many our neighboring cities, including San Jose was the first one in Santa Clara County to adopt their new uh transportation policy based on the sequel update. They use fifteen percent reduction. They they pretty much use the O P R. And many other cities, they are uh in the process and they maybe say half step ahead of us. They are already choosing the fifteen percent. Um staff recommendation during the discussion at the February meeting with the town council was we don't know what our numbers will be. We do need to do the work. Uh council expressed the desire to be, uh go bold, uh set a stretch goal. Those are the um the uh advice they provide to us.
Okay, I understand that. Um but in evaluating this, it would be useful to know if we are so bold that we're in the one percent, you know, uh responds to this, or, you know, are we pretty close to the to the average? You know, it's, to me, a lot of the numbers help to explain uh the impact. And uh it's, it's not clear where we are at this point. Are you saying that will, that will become more clear? And will there be a way for us to compare ourselves to the hundreds of other municipalities that are going through this at the same time? And say, okay, yeah, we're going bold, uh but, you know, this is way out on the extreme or not.
Uh yes, we will come back with the numbers. We we're waiting for our projections. And uh before the council makes a decision, we definitely will provide the data. And it may take us more than once uh to really run the, run the numbers and see uh the council's comfort level. Uh we will, yeah, definitely provide the comparison when we have the information already.
Okay, thank you very much. That's the questions that I have.
Commissioner Badami had her hand up. Go ahead.
I had a question regarding mitigation measures. So how effective and measurable are the mitigation measures? A developer could say, all right, I'm going to hand out a hundred transit passes that nobody's going to use. And we're still going to have the traffic. What do you do about that?
Uh that's a really valid question. And and uh so part of it is, in option two, we're going to handle the mitigation measures at a townwide level. Uh we're going to have this mitigation action plan. So those are, we're looking at bicycle and pedestrian improvements. Uh the council also expressed interest in a commuter shuttle. Um those are really townwide efforts. So we, we think those are more effective rather than a project by project that kind of evaluation. Your example of a developer handout of free transit passes, but who knows how many people are going to use it. That's exactly things, um the kind of situation want to avoid. There's not much accountability. While uh it will do something that um like building out a bicycle pedestrian network or provide a commuter shuttle, we we get to have the monitoring um on that. So that's, I think, that keeps the the town a bit more control over what will be done rather than a project by project, a bit one-off that kind of mitigation. So, did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Um so I I I have a follow-up question. Uh that was kind of, I I had, when you did the presentation, there's the chart of the mitigation measures. So if if I understood this correctly, um there, there's the fifteen percent recommendation. But then even with the O P R recommendation, there's a choice of mitigation. You could either force the mitigation on the developer or you could have it be a townwide effort, which is what you were just talking about. So I, the, I I see that as a problem from both sides, especially with Commissioner Hetus's question about what are other jurisdictions doing. So so if San Jose does fifteen percent, but they they have all mitigation are at the citywide level and they don't ask the developer to do anything, then that puts us in a bad way when we want to ask for something. And and likewise, you could turn it around the other way and say we're not going to be able to to um to make change happen if if it's all on us, even though we might be more successful doing it all on us. There are times when we want the developers to do stuff. So um that 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 part kind of bothers me because it seems like it's very fluid, even if you follow the O P R standard. Um and and we're going down this path and I I agree, we until we do the general plan, you know, sequel analysis, we aren't going to know what our V M T is and we won't know the standard is. But at the end of the day, we don't want to come up with a disadvantage relative to other jurisdictions in handling either traffic or being able to be competitive if it's a good project.
Um that's a good question. And then actually, uh that get me thinking, I actually forgot to mention one important element. When we say we do the mitigation action at the town level, what has to tie into is the update of our traffic impact fee program to be V M T based. So today, the developers are, uh they are required to pay into the traffic impact fee. We're going to update that program as a follow-up work and they will still have to continue to pay into a new fee. And that's what they, the the developers are contributing to those mitigation measures. But instead of they doing one-off, um fill the sidewalk gap or or change the signal timing, we have a more system systematic way to really look at this group of improvements to see what the impact will be at the town level. Um granted, we may still require, that's really details to be, to be, to be worked out, right? But we may still require um some uh frontage improvements. That's, that's something we are requiring today. So that is is not likely to change. We do have to work out the details on that. But in terms of how projects collectively can reduce V M T, we really, uh the option two allows and supports us in looking uh things at a townwide level rather than a one-off, one project, one location, um that kind of approach.
Okay, well, it's it looked to me that on that chart that even if you went with the O P R method, that you you could choose mitigation at the project level or at the town level. So so it it, like I said, I I I don't think there's anything to worry about right now. I I I like option two. It gives us more flexibility. But at the end of the day, um it's going to matter a lot what other jurisdictions do. Because, you know, we we may be off relative to um other jurisdictions.
Uh that's a really good point. Thank you. We would definitely uh keep that in mind and and as we walk out the next steps.
Do other commissioners have comments or questions for Ms. Smith? It looks like I don't see any hands raised. So um so I wanted to thank um you for your detailed presentation and for answering our questions. And as I understand it, we um, other than the comments that we've already made, we don't need to take action on this. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. And and thank you very much for your questions and and your attention to this.
Okay, all right. So um so Mr. Paulson, I, or Director Paulson, I think we're done with this item then. Um if if no one else had any comments, is that a fair statement?
That is.
Okay, all right. So with that being said, um we will move on to the next section, which is um the the item, which is a report from the Director of Community Development.
Great, thank you. So a couple of things that happened since you last met. Um last week, the council met and adopted the budget. Uh they also implemented some economic recovery uh actions that have been headed up by the county manager's office and Monica Ren, the Economic Vitality Manager. They had further conversation about that actually on Monday. And so they ended up going with an option where they're going to put K rail up in front of businesses along parking spaces where requested. Um so that's something to help downtown businesses, whether it's retail, restaurant or otherwise, have a little more outdoor area, given that outdoors only opportunity currently. We have exciting um workshop, workshop and presentation tomorrow night related to the general plan. Um we're going to have some presenters present regarding community design. So I encourage folks to go on to the los gatos twenty forty dot com website, the general plan website. You can get information and then ultimately the Zoom link and password, so you can participate that, participate in that. Um and then lastly, um next week, we will resume the general plan updated advisory committee meetings via Zoom. So we're going to give that its maiden voyage. So it'll be interesting to see with the number of members on that committee, how we are able to uh choreograph that. But we look forward to that opportunity so we can move forward with the general plan. Uh with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Um so then the next, I know on the agenda is subcommittee reports. In addition to their service on the planning commission, members of the commission serve on town committees. And we have three of those committees are conceptual development advisory commission, uh committee, the general plan advisory committee that Director Paulson mentioned, and then the historic preservation committee. I know we had a a conceptual development advisory committee. So I'm hoping um our vice chair, Commissioner Barnett, will make a report.
Yeah, the conceptual development advisory committee met today on C D twenty zero zero two, project location fifteen eight sixty dash fifteen eight ninety-four Winchester. And the A P Ns are five two nine dash eleven thirteen thirty-eight, thirty-nine and forty. Property applicant is Green Valley Corporation, D B A Swenson Builders. And we discussed a request for preliminary review of a the post construction of an assisted living facility, excuse me, and memory care facility or in the alternative construction of a mixed-use building on property zone zero. Or all. And there were comments submitted by the committee members and the developer indicated that he would take them under submission.
Okay, is that, is that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Um is there a report from Historic Preservation Committee or is there? Okay, so there's been no meeting and we haven't had a general plan advisory committee. Um in, but we will next week. Um are there any other matters that commissioners would like to speak on? Okay, seeing no hands raised, then I thank you all for participating in this meeting. We've gotten through our third Zoom meeting and successfully. And I thank you all for your service to the town and to this commission, and this meeting is adjourned.